Welcome to another conversation with candidates as we are chatting with folks who are running for Plymouth County Commissioner. So it'll be a series of conversations that we will be having. Joining us for today's discussion happens to be a candidate for county commissioner. His name is Anthony Thomas O'Brien Senior, better known as Tony O'Brien. Tony, welcome to the program.
Hi Kevin, thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. I got a little bit, little bit of a sore throat, but I hope that I'm clear enough to, uh, to get a job, job done.
Okay. So let's, let's start right out with, uh, tell folks a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Um, and I appreciate your great work, um, in the field and in media, Kevin, for years and years, one of my favorite journalists. Um, who's like a utility man. I know you're a sports guy, but it kind of does it all, you know, the, the writing and the TV and the radio, good stuff. Um, and most importantly, informing the folks, uh, about what's going on, like you, like you're doing now. I appreciate it. Uh, Anthony O'Brien. I'm a dad. I'm a military veteran, um, a member of many municipal and county boards and committees over the years, for 20 years. Basically helping out my community. Um, this is a reelection campaign for Plymouth County Commissioner. I am a challenger. In a reelection campaign, it is the only accountability for incumbents. That's it. During the, during the four year term, there's no other accountability. They can say everything's great. Everyone goes, everything's great. And well, maybe it's not. That's, that's the challenger's job to tell the folks the accountability and what the problems are. The incumbents are not going to run around telling everybody, here's what our problems are. They're just not going to do that. Um, so that's our job. And, um, we also had a great, um, primary election in September where, uh, my campaign won 25 out of 27 towns, uh, and beat the incumbent. And also in the Democrat, um, race, the, uh, Democrat challenger also beat, uh, the Democrat incumbent. Um, challenger is, is, is an understatement because it's a challenge to be a challenger 95% of the time. 95% of the time incumbents win in elected races. And it's even higher if you include those that are not opposed, and that's most. Um, so we're very proud of the fact that we won the primary. I'd like to say that we, we knew we were going to do well. I've been doing this for a long time in government and politics for 20 years. We knew we were strong, but we didn't realize how weak, um, the incumbent's office is. Um, so, uh, that's going to be a problem for them. We're hoping to make a strong challenge, um, for the next few weeks and then, uh, hopefully have a, have another good result.
So you previously held the, uh, office of county commissioner, did not seek reelection. What makes you want to run for county commissioner? Why do you want to be a county commissioner?
It's a great question. And, and one of the reasons is because I'm, I like a lot of people. Although it's become a joke in Plymouth County, what do the county commissioners do? Who are they? Why do we need them? Although that's become a joke, um, I personally don't think it's funny. Um, I had the office before. We did a good job in that office. Um, you might remember it's historic because we lost, I did it for four years. I didn't run for reelection because we had little toddlers. And didn't have the time, but when I was there, we lost the sheriff's department. The state took the sheriff's department away from us. We were managing some of their finances. And that was a big deal. Um, that was a couple of million bucks a year in, in revenue, uh, and, and a problem. So, uh, we put our team together, worked across the aisle, the treasurer, the administrator, the advisory board chair, myself. And we put a committee together first and then we made a plan and we, um, got the job done at that time. And I'm very proud of the fact that for four years in a row, as your county commissioner, we reduced the budget every year for four years in a row. Um, right now the budget's up $2 million from what it was just, uh, the last year or two. At $12 million. This is the smallest government office in all of Massachusetts that's run by elected people with, uh, 50, with only, uh, 58 employees, uh, who by the way, do a great job and, um, $12 million budget. You ask anybody elected offices running it, um, and they're not, uh, they, they don't have that small of an office. Um, in other words, it's actually not a big deal. Incumbents like to, like to move around and tell everybody that, yeah, it's a, it's a full-time job. I'm doing a full-time job. It's a big, it's not a big deal. So if you're looking at O'Brien as an option, you're going to get the truth. You can, you can trust me. You're going to get more competence. And that's why I'm running. I want to restore competence and trust back to the Plymouth County Commissioner's office.
You, I think started to mention it in your response, but so the next question that has to be asked, and I'm sure it's a question that you have been asked when you previously held the office and as you are out there seeking votes for the upcoming election on November 5th. What is it that the, the county commission does? And what does a county commissioner do?
Um, the, the truthful answer is not a lot. Um, and that's okay. I mean, what do you, but, but the worst part of it still is, is that we're asking that question. Um, it's not my job to tell. I mean, certainly it's my job to answer your questions, Kevin. So I'll do that. Trust me. You know that. But it's not my job to tell. Commissioner Hanley has been in that office 12 years. People are still asking, who's the county commissioner? What does he do? Why do we need him? He's had the last 12 years to answer that question so that it's not keep coming up. Obviously not doing the job and not doing the job right. Um, for the last three years, what they've been doing is taking $200 million, and they're not very proud of this because they don't talk about this very much and so far in our debates. But because they know it's a problem for the folks, $200 million in federal taxpayer money that was, that a lot of county residents considered to be some kind of a bailout. I don't know what they were trying to rescue. America doesn't need rescuing, but it was liberal tax to spend money kind of mindset that this came from. And they've been getting photo ops of, of checks given to all the 27 towns the size of a door. And obviously they thought it would be a political advantage. Yet the incumbent lost the primary. So I don't know what happened here, political advantage, but to the question, they attend a couple of meetings a month. That's the job. Some folks, including county commissioners have joked about, not joked about, but they've said, you know, it's kind of like a county selectman. That's unfortunate choice of words. It is like a county selectman in that they don't work full-time for the county. They're not there during the day. They attend a couple of meetings a month and talk about policy, talk about budget issues, sign documents, personnel, et cetera. Not a big deal. Same thing selectmen do. Meeting lasts about an hour plus or minus depending. So they have their meetings a couple of times a month. That's pretty much all they do. But the, they, they want to make it sound like that it's this huge job. Um, and it's just not. The arson departments, the hardest working people in county government are not the county commissioners. They are the administrator and the treasurer, and especially the treasurer has a significant amount of responsibilities with the Mayflower Health Group, the retirement system and the parking department. The administrator handles the courthouse maintenance staff, which is very small. The 4H, which is very small again, um, the dredge, uh, bulk municipal, uh, procurement that is actually done by the, uh, the treasurer. They handle all of that stuff. The commissioners do not have hands-on any of those things. They hand a policy makers, they're like policy issues. They're like figureheads signing the paperwork in and out. And the worst part about it, Kevin, is we, we mentioned that I was the commissioner 12 years ago. Our salary at the time was seven, uh, $7,500 per year. Somehow Mr. Hanley in the last 12 years has increased that salary to $33,000 a year. Here's the thing. Nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. It's the same job. It doesn't deserve $33,000. You need a human resources person to come in. I'll be glad to do it for you for nothing. And a human resources person to come in and say, this is the amount of money that should be here. Now back to the selectmen very quickly. The county commissioners are making $33,000 a year for attending two meetings per month. That comes out to about $1,500 per hour per meeting. Okay? Mr. Hanley attended 10 meetings last year out of 22. He got $3,500 per meeting last year. He, he doesn't show up. He's not doing the job. The selectmen who attend more than a couple of meetings per week, you know this, you've been to all these meetings, more than a couple of meetings per week, get zero salary. The county commissioners get $33,000. It's just simply wrong. It's another example of not doing the job and not doing it right. When I'm your county commissioner, you know I will.
Is there enough transparency with the commissioners? And when they hold their regular meetings, uh, if not, how can that be improved?
Um, it's a great question. It's a top question. The pri, the primary job that they have is their meetings. Um, and transparency is a huge issue. I've, I've talked about it a little bit already. Um, and the, the biggest, as we've talked about, I mean, transparency is a problem on its face. When you look at, what do they do? Who are they? I mean, right on its face. I mean, they should be talking to the public more about what they're doing. So these questions not only don't happen, but don't rise to the level of, crying out loud, guys, this is the worst county government joke. What do they do? You would never, hey, what are the selectmen doing? Uh, what does the state rep do? What's the government? No. What's the sheriff? Nobody asks these questions, but the county commissioners. It's literally a joke. That's at the heart of transparency. So there's a lot of things that are going on that, um, you know, people don't know about. For example, and, and there's reasons why. The Democrats actually, in the Democrat debate, the commissioner Hanley did not attend, by the way, um, didn't attend the, the forum in Plymouth two weeks ago. Didn't attend the forum on Friday in Kingston. Um, is, is, uh, Commissioner Hanley did not, is not attending the, the debate that's actually tomorrow night at WATD as, as we tape right now. There's, there's a level of arrogance from Commissioner Hanley that is troubling. Another example, they don't videotape their meetings. The Democrats discussed this in their debate that Commissioner Hanley did not attend. Okay. Again, not doing the job right. He's a candidate. He has to come to these things. He's got to be accountable. The Democrats talked about not videotaping the meetings. Very easy to do. Um, that was two months ago. It still is not done. We were at a forum a couple of days ago where one of the commissioners said, well, you know, it's kind of difficult. We're working on it. Uh, I've talked to some contractors, et cetera, et cetera. Time out, time out. No. Commissioner, you delegate this to the administrator. The administrator takes care of it. You don't got to do anything, Commissioner. You, you just delegate. All right? And oh, by the way, if you need any help, Commissioner, you're not going to talk to any contractors. I'll give you a little tip. Okay. Take out your phone, videotape the meetings and then post it on your website. Done. Now we have transparency. What happened at the meeting? It's on videotape. It's posted. You can live stream it. It's all right here, Commissioner. Stop talking to contractors. Stop spending money and taxing people. That is unnecessary. There's, um, the woodlot. Um, the woodlot's a problem. It's probably on your list. We could talk about it when you want. It's an issue of transparency. The woodlot is 100 acres in, in the town of Plymouth. Um, the commissioners want to develop, uh, the property and make it a revenue stream. They talked about horse track racing. They talked about casinos. The, the people in Plymouth put this on the ballot. They went through the work of putting this on the ballot. 88% of people in Plymouth said, no, we don't want this type of development on this property. When the commissioners had a meeting about this, leaders in Plymouth from the public sector, the private sector, citizens, government leaders were at the meeting and asked to speak. Now you might remember when I was county commissioner. When people asked me if they could have a chance to speak to the board, I said, yes. No question about it. Are you kidding me? They said, no. Commissioner Hanley said, no. All right. We're not going to listen to the public. Are you kidding me? Our home, America's hometown, where the county headquarters is located, we're not going to listen to the folks. Very disrespectful, very arrogant, and people are upset about it. They don't, they want open space there. Maybe a few municipal projects. They don't want development there. And I have called for in the last forum, I called for the commissioners to immediately rescind a lease that they made with the developer where they're getting county revenue for that. And that, and that unfortunately is their, is their primary interest is county revenue. And, and it should be in Plymouth or any town, in Plymouth or any town, the, the primary interest should be the best interest and the wishes of the town of Plymouth. Form a committee. It could be citizens. It could be from outside of Plymouth. It could be government leaders. Form a committee and do it right, please.
So many would perceive the county being successful when it came to, uh, providing the CARES Act funding or delegating that funding to the communities, uh, which was under the Trump administration, uh, to help with COVID, COVID-related expenses. And then you had the American Rescue Plan Act, which was continued under Joe Biden. If you will, talk to me about how, how does the county build upon that perceived success?
Dynamite question. Um, here's the tricky part. It's, correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like you're going in the direction of, that might be an example of kind of like regionalization and, you know, where can we go from there to here? Is, is that kind of what you're?
So to speak, so to speak, because I think people, I think, I think there are many, if you ask, they feel as though that the, the county was trying to find its identity, uh, over the years, whether it was during your administrative, during your time, before your time, past, after your time, and that they actually seem to have hit their stride in providing these, providing these funds when the idea was that the state was going to give out the funding. And depending on who you listen to, that you may have only received, if you were a community, you may have only have received a certain amount under the state's provision as compared to the county giving you out a, a bigger allotment.
Um, there's, there's a lot of stories, you know, about, you know, how it all developed, et cetera. Um, you're, you're a smarter sports guy than I. The, the $200 million, I referred to this earlier, the $200 million that came from the federal government. Kevin and Tony would refer to that as a layup. It was a layup. All right. $200 million CARES and ARPA divided up by 27 towns by population. That's a quick calculator job by anybody in the treasurers of the commissioner's office. And they have their staffs, but who do a great job, by the way. Um, and then stroke the checks. It's federal money coming in. There, there wasn't any, there wasn't any, you know, brain surgery going on there. In fact, it looked more like it was used as for their political advantage with all these photo ops. Okay. It, it, it strikes some arrogance. You, you, you have these checks. We, a couple for every town. You're going into town, you're rolling in, selectmen, town manager, et cetera, shaking hands. Here's the check from the commissioners. No, it's not from the commissioners. It's from the federal taxpayers. That's all of us. That's the folks that are watching. Okay? But they make it look like it's from the commissioners. Get the photo op, get the publicity. Folks in Plymouth County are not stupid. And they see through this stuff. They don't want bailouts. They lean more conservatively when it comes to finances. And they, they want to know where their dollars are going. A lot of this stuff that was, that was taken care of in COVID, uh, in CARES and, and ARPA were already things that were budgeted for or should be budgeted for or in the state or, um, federal or, or local budget. So there are questions about that. The real thing for me is that regionalization is tricky. We already have a lot of regional, regional services going on that, um, don't get enough credit. I mentioned some of them earlier. The health group, the retirement association, the, the parking department, um, the dredge, the 4H. Most of these are very, very small departments and divisions under the treasurer and the administrator, um, the bulk municipal purpose. They're all good and they're doing fine. However, okay, that doesn't mean that we, you know, we're the commissioners that we're going to brag about and exaggerate and misrepresent how big an operation this is. It's 58 employees. It's $12 million and it's handled by the department heads on the county staff. Regionalization is tricky. Uh, one of the Democrat candidates said in the, in their debate a couple of months ago, you know, let's regionalize animal control. Okay. Well, here's the thing. Anything, almost anything you want to regionalize, you're likely going to, likely going to be trying to get cost savings and combine functions. So if three towns want to regionalize a service, it's like you're going to be getting rid of one or two. Now, one or two personnel. Now they may be retiring out. That's one thing. But if not, what towns want to get rid of folks that are on their, their, uh, their employee list? They don't want to do that. They want to keep their employees. Regionalization is tricky. There's a lot of examples of regionalization already. There's been many, many promises, including by Commissioner Hanley, about many regionalization ideas during campaigns. And then those ideas go away. I've, you've heard it all. Water, electric, um, trash, et cetera. Let's do this. Folks, I'm not sure the towns want to do that. I heard they, they may have a committee that is formed, that may be town managers, town administrators, et cetera, one from every town, kind of like the advisory board, maybe include the advisory board. I've heard nothing about it. I, I heard that they created something like that. I may be wrong, but they don't report this stuff out. It seems like the question, one of the questions was transparency. There's a transparency issue. A lot, um, back in the day, um, I did a lot more media. I started the website, um, for the, for the Plymouth County, uh, government office. I did a lot more media, both in print, office hours, et cetera, like government officials are supposed to be doing. I don't see that as much. Of course there's some, but there's, there's also a lack of some. Every meeting, they should be, they should be in your TV studio or at the radio station or telling newspapers, we've got a meeting coming up. Here's our agenda. We, we just had the meeting. Here's the results. Here's highlights from the minutes. I was doing that. I'll gladly do it again because that is part of the job. Um, but, uh, regionalization is tricky. Um, I don't take anything away from the, you know, the, the money that did go to, for federal tax money that did go to actual, um, worthy and on the merit, uh, help for the towns, but, uh, there's a lot of people that have a lot of questions about it too. So it's tricky.
Okay. Where, uh, the time is not our friend. So we just want to make sure that we're concise with our answers here. You had mentioned, uh, an issue, a couple of issues during your responses. I think one of them, the woodlot. So basically my question is, is there an issue or series of issues that are, that are important to this race? That may be more important to one candidate than the other?
Absolutely. Um, you know, we talked about, uh, transparency. What do the, what do the commissioners do? That's a terrible, embarrassing question for them. Very bad. Uh, you know, what, what do they do? They attend the meetings. No, no, no. They do all this. It's not true. Um, not videotaping the meetings. The woodlot was an embarrassment, disrespectful, you know, just, just a terrible insult to the people of the town of Plymouth and, and all Plymouth residents. People do think regionalization is not happening enough, and it should be. A lot of these issues can also be discussed in a master plan. Plymouth County government should have a master plan, a strategic plan. People that have been in business, been in government, that work in, in executives, this is an executive position. They know that you need a master plan. Put your plan, you, you can't run around telling everybody you don't have any problems. You cannot do that. Okay? What are your problems? And then what are your solutions? You put them in your master plan. You make a timeline. I've done this for many, um, organizations. It's not hard to do. One of my biggest problems, of course, is Commissioner Hanley. Um, many know, some do not know that Mr. Hanley was the town administrator in the town of Holbrook. Holbrook let him go. Now, in less than a couple of years, if, if he can't serve as a town administrator in Holbrook, then how can he be an executive over the county administrator in Plymouth County? Sources for that are online. All you got to do is Google Holbrook Town Administrator Hanley, and you'll see it all there. Um, did he resign? Uh, did he, did he, was he fired? Again, more secrets. All right. Maybe there's a non-disclosure, but Plymouth County residents want answers. I mentioned that last year, he attended 10 out of 22 meetings, 10 out of 22 meetings. My kid attended 10 out of 22 classes. Oh, we'd need to have a problem. 10 out of 22 means again, is insulting, is absolutely insulting. Um, and again, not attending these forums. Uh, we just had three forums already. And, and it was on, uh, the radio station this morning that he's not attending the one for tomorrow night, which is October 22nd, and that's unfortunate. He also has allowed the hiring of family members, which we call nepotism in Plymouth County government. As far as I know, he's the only one that's done that. It's just another example of arrogance. Uh, I've got sources, a lot of this stuff's online. The budget's online. The minutes are online for the meetings for the last few years. Um, the personnel are in the, the budget, uh, and, and the minutes, et cetera. So, um, here, here's the deal, Kevin. Commissioner Greg Hanley is my opponent and it's my goal to beat him. I want to restore, uh, trust and competency to Plymouth County government. I'm very disappointed in his performance and I hope that, uh, folks will check it out. Um, and if they need any, uh, you know, information from me, www.anthonyobrien.com. My cell phone's on there, my LinkedIn, my entire resume is there. No firings on there. Like, like some of the other commissioners, uh, not just LinkedIn, but Facebook also, um, with, with my kids and stuff and the work that we do with the PTO. Reach out to me. Anybody has any challenge for any of the information I'm putting out, I'll give you the sources, no problem.
So you mentioned the budget. What can be done to help the county generate revenue? To be able to have a balanced budget on an annual basis? What can be done to improve the county's finances?
This is something else that, that, that is disappointing too. Um, Commissioner Hanley mentions in his radio ad that he mentions, um, that he, he, when he took over, there was a structural deficit. There was no, there's no structural deficit. Commissioner Hanley doesn't know what a structural deficit is, Kevin. A structural deficit is year after year. In Massachusetts, no government office, including the county government can have a deficit at the end of the year. You can't do it. Your budget must be balanced and you must submit it to the Department of Revenue where they certify it. Everybody. Why after 12 years, he doesn't know that is absolutely embarrassing. The budget is balanced, uh, every, every year, Kevin, it is. Another part of his radio ad says that he saved the county government, um, 12 years ago. Nobody saved the county government. That nobody needed to save the county government. The county government's not going anywhere. We were involved with the charter commission. He tries to take credit for this. We were involved with the charter commission and putting it on the ballot, forming it, and the folk, the voters in Plymouth, Plymouth County said, we want the county government to stay. And yet, no, he, he never saved the county government from anything. In fact, the Holbrook selectmen saved the town of Holbrook from Hanley by letting him go as town administrator in less than two years. Just embarrassing, disqualified and has got to go. I'm a challenger. I'm, I'm not here to bring, you know, soft drinks and flowers and chocolates and say, everybody's doing a great job. That's not my job. My job is to say, here's the problems. I'm telling you them honestly and consider them.
Okay. How about ideas? What do you get for new ideas to help the county if you are elected on November 5th?
Um, a great question. Um, I'll circle back to what we talked about earlier, which is they supposedly have a committee of representatives from the town. By the way, this can be done by advisory too. Don't forget the advisory board members are one select one from every town, 27 towns, folks. When you have these meetings, ask them. Ask them. They're our customers. What can we do for you? But again, it's also tricky because, you know, ex-person in the office that might lose their job because we're regionalizing, which means we're, we're streamlining. You know, it gets, it can get a little tricky. Um, I mean, how many county, how many town officials want to give up that office, give up that person, um, for the sake of regional, regionalizing? Um, so I don't have a clear and specific answer on that. I will tell you this. I'll work harder on it than, than Commissioner Hanley. And I'll provide you information as I did before, such that these questions won't be so murky because a lot of these questions aren't asked except one time every four years. If there's a challenger, if there's a challenger, and that's the only time it comes up. And then what happens? Incumbents get reelected. Let's, let's stop that cycle now, folks, please.
Let's talk a little bit about the 4H program. How important is it to the viability of the, the county? Give me your thoughts on the 4H program.
No one's going to say. I've got two boys, 11 and 13. All right. Smooching the meatball, Anthony and James. Love of my life. Greatest thing I've ever been involved with. Um, and I've been lucky to be involved with a lot of great stuff, including these, these types of things that you and I do, Kevin. It's important. Um, certainly Tony O'Brien is going to say, get them out of here. Um, you know, are you kidding me? Love them. Go to the middle borough shows, go to the Mashfield Fair. You can't have it. I wish the Mashfield was running all, all year long. Um, they're absolutely fantastic. I was on their board. I was on the 4H Board of Trustees. Uh, when I was county commissioner, they appoint one member. Um, I also was on the board for the health group. Um, and then we also appoint a member of the retiree association. And by the way, that's all commissioners do with the health group and the retiree system is, is appoint a member. That's it. They want to take credit for more than that. It's just not, it's a misrepresentation. The 4H health group is incredible. By the way, it's also in collaboration with the University of Massachusetts. Um, and I'm very proud that one of the reasons why I didn't have a stronger campaign as I, I wanted in the summer Um, and I'm very proud that, one of the reasons why I didn't have as strong a campaign as I, I wanted in the summer for the primary, which we won again, 25 out of 27 towns, um, is because I was finishing my master's degree at UMass this summer. Very proud of that. And it was so great to have my kids there, they were graduating. Um, and so I have my two boys there while I'm wearing the cap and the gown and everything was cool. Back to 4H, there's an edu, 4H educational. All right, there's the tie-in. And, um, fantastic, when you, when, when you got education in animals, come on, come on. Who's not on that? For us, a small department, like, like a whole bunch of them. I mean, the only large, the biggest department that we have in the $12 million budget, about $5 million is the registry deeds. We provide executive oversight for, but don't forget the registry deeds and the treasurer in, in the county. You, you'll remember, nine out of 14 counties were abolished. The county governments, sorry, not the county, the county governments were abolished in the 1990s. They still have a registry deeds, no executive oversight by commissioners. He's the executive, you know, he doesn't need an oversight. Um, and then also the, uh, the treasurer. Lot of responsibilities, doesn't need a lot of help from the county commissioners, get out of his way. And they both stay in place whether, whether you have county government or not. And I support county government continuing because of the charter commission work that we did. And the charter commission asked the folks, do you want county government to continue? And the folks said, absolutely. So, so the, the stay or go thing, it's a moot point. It's entertaining, but it's also a little bit of a punchline on, on county government that, uh, uh, listen, I got a sense of humor you did too. I mean, go for it. 4H is, 4H is four stars.
But it's, but, but you know, is it, should it stay or should it go? Is it, it's low, it's, it's been low hanging fruit for some folks who provide commentary and can't come up with new questions to ask in regards to this form of government. It's just, it's laziness, but who, who am I, who am I to say otherwise? I'm here to ask questions that are relevant.
Yeah.
And so probably one of the, one of the final of two questions I'll ask you. And that is, this one's kind of an open-ended question. That is, is there a subject or topic that we have not touched upon yet that you want to speak to? Or is there something that we would, we've talked about earlier on in the conversation that maybe you might want to circle back to and, and give a little bit of follow, a follow-up commentary to?
The, the Commissioner Hanley's job, he's been, he's been the county commissioner for 12 years. He has not done much. Um, very disappointing the job he's done. That is why I'm running. That is why he lost his primary. This, this doesn't happen in Massachusetts. Democrats do not, uh, lose primaries. His challenger topped the ballot in the Democrat primary. I topped the ballot in the Republican primary. They got a problem. They got a problem. Look, the, the Democrat challenger and myself were strong. We've been in the community for years. We've been helping out. Um, I thought we would both do well. There's, there's no way I thought we were going to win, um, in the primary. Um, it's for two seats. We didn't mention that. It is a two-seat race. It's an unusual race. You can vote for two, you can vote for one. You're going to vote for one, folks, think about O'Brien, just saying. Um, you can vote for none. And unfortunately, because again, what do they do? Because people don't know, blanks, blanks will be one of the top vote getters in this race, which means they don't vote for anybody because they're not getting the word out. Commissioner Hanley's had 12 years. In my opinion, it's been, uh, four to eight years too long. Um, he had his chance and it's time to, uh, retire him from the county commissioner's office. Um, and I hope that folks will help Anthony O'Brien do that.
Okay. Closing, uh, if folks want to find out more about you and your campaign, how can they do that?
Uh, Kevin, I love your work as a journalist across the board for the, the 20 years that I haven't followed you. Um, and I'm sure you've been doing it a lot longer than that. Um, but I was in the military and then got out. Um, so I wasn't paying as close attention away when I was doing my seven tours in the Middle East.